Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I call to order and convene the City Council and City Council's Housing Authority for the City of Grand Terrace, regular agenda for March 26, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Father Andrew Lesko of the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church and the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Supervisor Third District Don Rao.
Let us pray. O heavenly King, the Comforter, Spirit of Truth, who our presence everywhere fills all things, we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us and upon our city. This night, we're especially thankful for our mayor, our City Council members, and all city employees who worked tirelessly to make this city such a great place to live, work, and play. And as we begin this meeting, we ask you to bless us all and to give us your strength, wisdom, patience, and understanding that whatever we do in the course of this meeting will be for the benefit of the City of Grand Terrace and the glory of your name. Amen.
Will you please join me in salute to the flag of our great nation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Andrew. Thank you, Supervisor Rao. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is a special presentation. We welcome the Third District Supervisor Don Rao to introduce herself and tell us a little bit what's happening in the district.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to be here tonight. I am the newly appointed Third District Supervisor for the County of San Bernardino. It is a pleasure to serve this city as well as -- we have 11 in the district, so 10 others. And the unincorporated area is vast and large, which is in contrast to many of the other supervisory districts. So just by way of contrast, we go all the way out to 29 Palms in the Third District, through the entire Morongo Basin, out to Barstow, up to Big Bear Lake, and then down into San Bernardino, Colton, Grand Terrace, Loma Linda, Highland, Jucaipa, Redlands. So it's an extensive district, trying to get out to all the council to put faces to names and apologies for those that I forget as I meet many people along the way. The county is doing lots of interesting and unique things. I gave a brief today in Highland where we have a new service called 211, and that's going to partner with a new grant that we just received from the state for $17 million to be implemented over the next five years for homelessness and homelessness efforts. And it will be between the Department of Aging and Adult Services, the Sheriff's Department. We have Behavioral Health Services, and they will go out in special teams that will identify our severe homeless and try to relocate them and assess them where they are best served, whether that's in a mental health facility or in a hospital or just off the street in need of some kind of employment and housing. So that's something that's new, and 211 is something that you can now dial, and we have bilingual operators that will help route our merchants and our constituents when they have and identify those homeless and would like the task force to come out and help with those. So that's something that's new and different. I just learned this morning that we have a 911 text. Most counties just do 911 voice, and in San Bernardino County, we have, if you can't call, you can text 911. So that's an interesting thing to note for those that you serve, and that's pretty much new. All that's new with us at the county, we still have our Generation Go, which is a big push that we have right now, which is our workforce development, where we're taking ideas and companies and careers that are in the county and partnering them with our education and starting young and teaching kids what it's like to have different things, like 3D printers in their classrooms, what it means to partner with businesses and maybe come out of high school with a skill or a trade and have an opportunity for an internship to explore maybe college in that pursuit and maybe not. Maybe it's a trade or a learned skill. So that's something that we're excited about in partnering with our businesses and welcome any Grand Terrace businesses if they're interested in joining that program. So happy to take any questions that you may have of me this evening.
Thank you, Supervisor Rao. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Hesse.
Well, congratulations on your post, but I thought my sister was running because her name's Don Rao.
Are you kidding?
No, and she's a senior planner at Ponte and I called her. I go, "Are you telling your brother anything?"
Oh, you know what? I believe after I was appointed, she may have had a few Facebook messages.
Yeah, so.
[laughing].
Yeah, I got, you know, I was getting ready to ask her for a loan or something and see if I could get her a share.
That's funny. And no relation, and my late husband pronounces it Rao, which is unfortunate because it looks like Ro.
Yes, she says Ro, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Absolutely.
My question was how you pronounce it.
It's how it doesn't look.
Okay. Any more questions for the supervisor at this time while we have her? Okay. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to having you serve.
Your mayor has been very open, and we've had several meetings, and it's been nice getting to know Grand Terrace and the origins and the needs of the city. So it seems like a great place, and I'm enjoying serving. So thank you.
Right. Come and visit often.
We'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. We have a couple of items from the Housing Authority, I believe, item five, but I think item four is the minutes from the Housing Authority, so those will be taken separately. So consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any member of the City Council, any city staff, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar. Are there any requests for removal of items? All right. So I will entertain a motion for the items one, two, three, six, seven, and eight that are City Council.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor, to approve items one, two, three, six, seven, and eight of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. So we have items four and five for the Housing Authority. I'll entertain a motion for those two items.
I'd like to make a motion for items four and five.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Hesse, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Board Members Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Vice Chair Wilson voting yes, and Chair Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also receive a brief response from staff and may be agendized for a future meeting. Are there any requests to speak during this time? Thank you. Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace. Wanted to just comment on the recent issues that we've had in the city as far as safety and bring back the issue of the Neighborhood Watch Program. I know the mayor and I and several others had gone to Deepwell and talked to Mr. King about their program, and we worked a lot with Councilmember Reinars before he left, and we tried to implement using the street sweeper mapping to create zones for the city and have zone captains to really spearhead revitalizing the Neighborhood Watch Program. And I'd like to see the City Council and the mayor put emphasis back on that program. And I know that we've been working with Assemblymember Reyes to try and get some funding. We need new signage, we need all kinds of support, and there's always seems to be grant money for these things, and I hope that the City Council and the mayor would go after the funds to help supplement our budget to be able to revitalize that program and see if we can do more to publish the Neighborhood Watch Program and get community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll close public comment and bring it back to councilmembers for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. So I -- the only meeting or event I was able to attend since our last meeting, you know, it's just been a short time, but on the 25th, which was yesterday, I attended the Veterans' Advisory Committee for the San Bernardino County Department of Veterans Affairs because I'm the chairperson of that. And even though that's not related to the city directly, I needed -- I just really think it's important to let our veteran residents know about an upcoming expungement clinic for vets. And this is a clinic where all the players that are necessary to be involved in helping a veteran with a conviction get it reduced. If it's a misdemeanor, you can possibly get it cleared out of your records, or if it's a nonviolent felony, possibly get it reduced to a misdemeanor through the Veterans Affairs Expungement Clinic. This is going to be on April 15 at the County Veterans Affairs Office on Hospitality Lane behind Sioux Plantation, and it starts at 9:00 a.m., first come, first served. What makes it unique and special is that all the various players who are in other offices throughout the county are going to be there, so the vet only has to go to one place. They'll have somebody there to help them walk them through the process. Also, Madam Mayor, I'd like to add another name sadly to our list of names to be honored in closing. Tonight, Albert Madrid was a young man, a Grand Terrace resident, who selflessly gave his life in a house fire in Highland a few days ago to save two other people. And I'd like to add his name tonight in closing, please. Albert Madrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. One quick note, I went to the candlelight vigil for Ryan and his brother Brian over at Cal State. It was a humble experience, you know, and it's a shame that somebody lost their life over money, but the town was out and the city was out in force, and seemed like a really nice guy. I met him for like a brief second when he opened up Cal State, so my thought and prayers are out for his family, and hopefully, you know, the persons will get caught and face justice. I had a report from last time, the League of Cities, I'm on the board there, and they had it, it's about the labor market intelligence report for San Bernardino County. I'll just go over it quickly and briefly. The economy is expected to grow at a slower rate compared from the previous since 2010. The county economy has added over 130,000 jobs at a growth rate of 27% compared to the state at 19%. San Bernardino County wage grew by 16% compared to 25% for the entire state. Average wage per county and players per year is 43,000, state level 65,000. The key to cater for our county's growth is migration. In 2017, the county saw roughly 25,000 new residents settled in the region. Of course, the cost of living in San Bernardino County is 60% less than Orange County and 50% less than LA County. And our labor force participation rate for San Bernardino youth is between 16 and 24, so we have a high labor force in that age group. Industrial analysts, logistics employment is up by 13.8% year to year as the first quarter of 2018. Since 2009, the logistics sector has nearly doubled in San Bernardino County. Together, warehousing and transportation account for 16% of the county total employment. So that's one in six jobs within transportation and warehousing. The sector growth is expected to continue over the near term, but not double digits is now considered sustainable. The housing, the housing market has slowed as a result of the mortgage bump in rates, but it's nothing to be alarmed or concerned about because the housing pause is also, it's a good thing that the housing pause could be housing basis, so we won't have that same downfall as in 2009. The U.S. housing market is not overpriced, nor has there been any risky lending or lending in general occurring. The pace of building has been reasonable so that there is no excess supplies to worry about. The market is reasonably too. Changes in interest rates is good, things prices need to adjust at a higher carry cost. Once this happens, the market should come back. So back on track. Anyway, some most of this report up is the study does not anticipate any major changes in economy growth between now and 2020, so it's still growing at a pretty healthy pace, so 2020 we'll figure out what's going to happen then. Hopefully, it continues to grow at a good, healthy pace. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Well, those that have noticed that I had 21 days of illness, it turned into bronchitis and some asthma symptoms for me, so my regrets to the Grand Terrace Women's Club for missing the fashion show, but the check was sent. I did, was able to attend the Girl Scouts Women's History Celebration here at City Hall, and I really enjoyed it. It was just really great to see some of the young women that are so accomplished in non-traditional fields such as firefighting. We have a young captain there and also in the Sheriff's Department, and some women that served in the military. It was just really something that was beneficial for me also. We're not on the agenda, so we'll have a report later, but I did attend a meeting with the National Orange Show with an ad hoc committee, and that will be placed on the agenda, so we'll be able to share and discuss that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, last Thursday, we did, as our ad hoc committee, met with the Orange Show folks. We're going to defer that item for comments and a report to an agendized item at our next meeting. The only other thing I have is that there is a teachers' job fair, believe it or not, at the Orange Show to be held on the 30th of March, which is Saturday, between 9:00 and 12:00. And if that got any interested parties in there, you might want to pull that up on the website and see what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just have some highlights from the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority General Policy Committee. This is the time of year where we review fiscal years, so we have looked at the fiscal year for 1920 budget, and we're providing direction so that that goes to the full board. We also received the Initiative and Action Plan for the third quarter of 2018-19. We received information on the progress of the Inland Empire 511 system since its launch in April 2010. Yeah, 511 is a traveler information phone service. In looking at this particular system, they are also looking at the call boxes that are along the freeway, and they are recommending a reduction based on call usage now that so many drivers have cellphones and cellphone coverage is pretty extensive. They are looking at keeping the call boxes in the areas of the county where cellphone use generally drops off based on the coverage. They're looking at a preparation of converting the whole system to either a 4G or 5G, depending on when that upgrade goes through, and they are looking at possible merging of a, into an inland empire-wide 511 system that works with the LA County system and the Orange County system so that it would cover all of Southern California and maybe some opportunities for savings by merging those systems. They also looked at improving traffic flow by providing motorists with timely accident and congestion information through 511. So if you did not know that 511 and IE511.org existed, it's an opportunity for you to find out where there are accidents and slowing on freeways that you might be taking to your destination and give you an opportunity to create a different route if possible. SBCTA or San Bernardino County Transit Authority Metro Valley Study Session also met, and we had a preview of resolutions, excuse me, hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for property interest along Interstate 10 for the cities of Montclair, Upland, and Ontario for the Express Lane Project, and we also recommended approval of a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the Archibald Avenue Improvement Project at State Route 60. I also attended a strategic planning workshop for the OmniTrans Board, and we are looking at ways to consider the viability of the budget for that particular organization. As they look to the future, they are seeing quite a bit of an issue when it comes to the cost to provide bus service throughout the county. So moving forward, it'll be interesting to see what options come up, but what I did learn from interacting with their employees is they are ready to look at innovative solutions and are quite eager to get direction to do so. So that'll be a nice, a nice way to go forward, hopefully, in the near future with our bus routes. I also enjoyed the Girl Scouts Women's History event. There were quite a few young ladies who were ready to be inspired by those that spoke, and thank you, Councilmember Robles, for your encouragement to the young women. I also want to mention that we will be closing in honor tonight of now three gentlemen that we have lost. We will be closing in memory of Ryan Harsony, who is the Cal State, Cal State owner and longtime resident, his family's a longtime resident, are longtime residents in the city. Grand Terrace resident and Marine veteran Willie English, and then Albert Madrid, who showed us his selflessness by risking his life and unfortunately not surviving, but he did save the life of others. So we will be closing tonight in the honor and the memory of those three men. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we will move to new business. And our first item is item nine on our agenda, which is the March 2019 Award of Community Benefit Fund in the amount of $1,545 to the REC Center for Teen Advisory Board to attend leadership development training. And I have Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Todd Nakasaki of the Finance Department will be making the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Nakasaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. The staff report before you is for the Community Benefits Fund grant application, which supports the following goals. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received. And goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. The city has received one application for the month of March from the REC Center. The activity and purpose is to provide training for students to learn to develop leadership legacies and to become confident in their ability to accomplish their goals. The amount they are applying for is $1,545. Funds are to be used for the Disney Youth Education Creating a Leadership Legacy Series. The Community Benefit Fund original approved amount is $20,000. City Council has approved $1,395 to date, leaving a balance of $8,605. Should the City Council approve the application before them tonight, this will leave them with a balance of $7,060. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakasaki.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Mr. Nakasaki and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. At this time, the executive director from the REC Center is here, and she's brought some of the students who will be attending this workshop, and they would like to say a few words to City Council. They'd like to describe the workshop and what they will be doing. So I will invite the students and their executive director to please come up.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Hello. Oh, can you hear? Oh, okay. Hello. My name is Oasis Perez, and I go to Grand Terrace High School. I'm here today to talk about the program that you would be giving us funds to. It would provide leadership opportunities for us to be able to grow, I'm sorry, I'm a little sick, as individuals, to be able to leave our legacy as we continue with the teen advisory program. Over time, we have shrunk a little bit, so this year, we are implementing the availability for sixth grade and middle school to be a part of the teen advisory board. That's my.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Who else do we have speaking tonight?
They're getting shy, but go ahead.
Hi, I'm Raymond Ariza, and I go to Grand Terrace High School, and we want to get this approved because we want to try to build together as leaders and try to work together for the community because we just let sixth graders into coming into the teen advisory board because we realized that middle schoolers have sixth graders coming in, and we wanted to open that up to them too in case they wanted to come and try to work together for the community. And so there's going to be one sixth grader, I think, going to go to the Disney program too, so he can learn and work together as a team more and build up with the leadership that we're all going to have.
Thank you, Mr. Ariza. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak from your group?
I was planning on letting them handle this themselves, but we just want to thank you for your consideration and for all the opportunities. I did see a few out for the basketball closing ceremonies in which our cheerleaders were able to show off their brand-new uniforms that were approved through the council. So all of the support, all of the consideration, really, really appreciated. Just want to thank you all for that.
One question I have, and then I will open up to my colleagues if they have questions. Will you come back? If you should be awarded this, will you come back and tell us about what you've learned? And I want to hear from each of you, but those of you that spoke tonight, I understand. It's a little nerve-wracking being up there, so I applaud you for doing that. So I will open up to council. Do you have questions of the applicant or of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Hello. So it's going to be at Disneyland?
This is, this particular one's at California Adventure, so they train them within the park, teaching them of Walt Disney's leadership styles. They attended in 2016, and they focused on building as a team. It was a lot of team-building exercises and learning the Walt Disney leadership principles. This one will be at California Adventure, and now they're looking at their individual leadership style. So a little bit different of a program, but yes, it's within the Disney parks.
Can I go?
We would love for you to attend with us.
Because I'm a little shy too. I don't like speaking, but no, I want to wish you guys all the best, and it sounds like a good program. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ariza, how long has the REC Center been in operation here in Grand Terrace?
We officially formed as an organization, being awarded our 501(c)(3) dated October 12, 2012.
Okay, and about how many youth have been impacted by your program in Grand Terrace?
On an annual basis, we're serving about 300, just under 300 per year. That would be individual count, not reoccurring attendance count. So we have one student that may attend three classes all 12 months, so our individual student count would be just below 300 a year.
Okay, that's great. And you also have an operation elsewhere, is that correct?
Unfortunately, we've had to cease operations there due to the homeless population of the park. It became an unsafe environment in Bloomington, so we had to cease that. Our hope is that we can continue serving them, but at that point, it was safety over opportunity.
I understand. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant or of staff? I've seen none. I will open it up to public comment. Thank you very much to all of you for being here. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion or consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. I recommend approval of the Community Benefits Fund grant application for $1,545 to the REC Center for the Teen Advisory Board to attend the leadership development training creating a leadership legacy through the Disney Youth Education Series at Disney California Adventure.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNobbo voting yes.
All right. There you are. We look forward to having you come back and tell us about your experience. All right, we'll move on to Item 10, which is the January 2010 Monthly Finance Report and 2018-19 Midyear and Year-end Budget Review. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem. Again, before you is the 2018-19 Midyear and Year-end Budget Review. This supports Goal Number One, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenues and expenditures against approved budget allocations. So, we have several purposes for tonight's staff report. To go through our mid-year actuals and our year-end projections, to discuss any proposed budget adjustments for the current year, if any, to review the general fund's outstanding liabilities, to review other post-employment benefits and pension liabilities, and to provide an overview of the childcare fund's financial position. So, I'm going to start with the mid-year actuals. So, these are our actuals as of January 31, 2019. And I do understand that there are quite a few numbers on the board. However, just to give a summary, our approved budget is 5.5 million. By the end of January, we are expecting to receive close to $3 million. Our actuals are 2,970, so at this time, our revenues are actually 28,000 less than what we are expecting. Any variances, I will be discussing at our year-end so that we don't repeat ourselves. Now, for our actual expenditures, again, at this time, as of January, we should have been spending a little over 3 million, 3,570. As of that month, we're actually on budget, on target. But then again, because of the reduction in revenue, our monthly actuals were actually 83,000 less than actual revenues received. So, with that in mind, we did review all our revenues and our expenditures, and we came up with year-end projections. So, for 1819, the second column is our year-end projection. As you can see, again, our budget, total budget, is 5.5 million. That's the last column, last row. Our year-end projection is 5.4 million. So, that's actually 121,000 less than what our approved budget was. And we had several factors that were huge. And as you can see, our third row is residual receipts from housing. At one point, when the lease agreement was signed between Corporation for Better Housing and the city and the successor agency, the lease agreement said that should there be any residual receipts from gross revenues, less operating expenditures, and required reserves, it will be distributed. Now, in 1617, we actually received $64,000. Now, much as we didn't receive anything in 1718, we were trying to be hopeful that maybe we would receive something again. At this point, we have not, so we are being conservative and assume that we're not going to receive anything between now and June. So, that is a $60,000 decrease. Now, our licenses, fees, and permits, we do have a lot of activity, and I think it was just maybe optimism on our part. When we reviewed all our plans or permits, a lot of our projects are still in the planning review system. So, the revenues that we were expecting this year are going to come actually in 1920. So, we're still going to get the revenues, it's just not in this year. It's going to happen after July. And other revenues, again, miscellaneous revenues, we thought we would receive, and we don't think, I don't think we're going to be receiving them. I'm a very conservative person when I project revenues. So, granted that we have a reduction of about 120,000 in revenues, we also took a look at all our expenditures and see where we could, where we were going to have any savings. So, our Planning and Development Services column actually has savings of 69,000. At the beginning of the year, when we consolidated animal control and brought that in-house, if City Council will remember, we were projecting a $50,000 savings as a result of that. So, the bulk of that is that, for bringing animal control in-house. And Public Works, we lost a maintenance worker, but we are going to be filling the position soon, so that number of months that it was vacant is going to result in about a $20,000 So, even if we have a reduction of 120 in revenues, we're going to be saving about 114,000. So, if we actually look at our projected year, year-end, for revenues and expense, we're actually going to break even for fiscal year 2018-19. $100, but, you know. So, normally, every time we do a financial report, the city manager would always like to preview the general fund's long-term financial performance. And this is from 2008, 2009, and again, to 1819 and 1920 because we projected a two-year budget. And so, at one point, the city actually could not meet its operating expenditures. The revenues were less than that. We have slowly gone out of that recession and gotten to the point of being sustainable, meaning our revenues exceed our expenditures, and we do have a two-month reserve for rainy day fund. However, the last couple of years, our revenues have been meeting our expenditures, so we haven't actually been exceeding it. So, any growth in revenue that we have was keeping up with our increase in expenditures. And as City Council is aware, our biggest increase in expenditures is normally our increase in public safety. It is a big contract, so a 4%, a 5% or 6% increase is going to get us to about 150,000. So, that is always something that we have to bear in mind every year. So, if you look at it, if you look at 18 and 1920, we didn't want to show that we were getting better and better, since all we're actually doing is revenues that are generating or meeting our expenditures. And if the city manager would like to add to that, I just thought.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you for the record, Gerald Duffy, City Manager. One of the things that I wanted to stress to the council and also to, talking with Ms. Fortune, is that, so we are now entering into an area of service insolvency. And so, what's happening is we're balancing our budget, but we're not able to meet the demands of the citizens. And so, what's happening is we're able to meet the, as Ms. Fortune mentioned earlier, we're able to meet the ongoing inflation expenses from one year to the next, but there's a consistent call for additional services. And the way our revenues are looking right now, we just cannot make that at this point in time. We do have, so it's a lot different than what you've had in the past. So, I'm not saying that we're not financially sound. What I'm saying is, we can't keep up with the demand for additional services. So, you're meeting all of your obligations. If things don't change and the inflation rate stays the same where they are, we'll be doing the same thing next year. We'll have a slight increase in revenue, and we'll have a slight increase in expenditures, and we'll cover that balance. What's really good about what's happening, though, is that the City Council does have a significant amount of one-time money to help with projects. And there's one-time money for its redevelopment bond proceeds to help with projects to set the stage for the future. And what we're talking about, the future, is setting the stage for the infrastructure to be able to welcome new businesses. And as Ms. Fortune said, we had anticipated some new businesses already constructing their projects, and they're just a little bit slow. We'll see those come online soon. So, my caution is, I am optimistic, but I'm just letting the council and the community know that we are meeting all of our obligations, but we're going to be slow on being able to expand or increase the level of services because we're just not getting those new revenues as fast as the annual inflation expenses are occurring.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Ms. Fortune, did you have more?
So, as part of our report, and when we look at our 2019-20 budget, we thought it prudent to provide City Council with the general fund's existing liabilities at this time. So, these are our three major liabilities. The successor agency, to date, we owe 925,000. As stated in the staff report, there were tax increment misallocations that were transferred to the general fund between 1980-81 and '92-'93. So, that was a long time ago. And then, between '94-'95 and '98-'99, they also made advances to the general fund. So, at one point, total debt owed was over $4 million. Now, we have since paid this down by 3.3, and now this is what is owed, is 925,000. At the time that the successor agency was providing advances to the general fund, and I'm jumping here, the housing authority was doing the same. They were also providing those advances. Those happened concurrently right around the same time. Some of it was also paid back, but there was still a balance of, that should have been 168, not 186. That's just a typo. Now, the wastewater fund, a couple of years ago, property was purchased on 22293 Barton Road, and net owed at this time is 875,000. And the first payment for that will begin in 2021, when we prepare that budget, because we do have an agreement for that, we're going to start a payment plan on that. And our other major liabilities, our other post-employment benefits, and our pension liabilities. So, for other post-employment, the city provides a medical plan coverage for retirees. It's available for employees who are aged 50 or older with at least five years of public agency service, and they retire from the city of Gran Terrace. We will offer them the medical plan. And this medical plan meets the definition of providing other post-employment benefits to our employees. The city is on what we refer to as a pay-as-you-go plan. For those retirees that do apply for it, we do pay out. So, the average contribution is between 15,000 and 20,000 dollars. The total liability at this time is about 1.6. So, now, our pension liability is our unfunded accrued liability. Our actual total pension, market value, so to speak, is about 14 million, 9 million of which we actually have covered with CalPERS. So, this is only the unfunded part, yeah, which is about 4.8 million to date. So, as you can see, you can see Tier 1, Tier 2, and PAPRA. Tier 1 is our biggest liability. That also has the biggest number of participants. And as everyone knows, since 2013, we came up with Tier 2, and then PAPRA followed soon So, for unfunded accrued liability, I just wanted to give City Council an idea. For this current year, our liability was 388,000. Next year, it's going to go up to 445,000. This is the annual required contribution. Okay, now, we're going to move to the childcare fund. So, the childcare facility was sold, and we netted 850,000 in July of last year. We came to City Council and asked that 615 be used to pay all of the child care's negative fund balance and 1819, existing their portion of the unfunded accrued liability. So, when we come back for the 1920 budget, off that net of 234,000, we will be requesting that 150 be used for the childcare's portion of the unfunded accrued liability, and the balance will be transferred to the general fund. At this point, by next year, we will be closing the childcare fund, so that means in 2021 that the 150,000 portion of the childcare will have to be absorbed by the general So, that concludes the financial report. I would be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Mayor Protem Wilson.
Ms. Fortune, do us a favor. For those who don't speak in this particular language, starting with the city of Gran Terrace on packet page 167, general fund outstanding liabilities. Liability means to me that it may not have to be paid today, but it definitely is going to be there somewhere on the books.
That is correct.
Okay. So, from that standpoint, I feel a little bit relaxed. So, can you tell me that 925,272 deficit or liability, how does it pay, and when does it pay off? In other words, what pew does it come out of?
I'm sorry, say what?
What pew? In other words, what account does it come from to pay it off? And then, when does it pay off?
At this point, sir, the general fund has not, we have not set up any payment plan or terms, like the housing authority's balance of 168. The city manager and I will be looking at that and propose a payment plan.
Okay. Then, on to the one that's on packet page 168. City of Gran Terrace, general fund outstanding liabilities, in particular, because the rest of it is chump change, is the $875,000 wastewater fund. And you said that the first payment goes on 2021? Is that what's programmed?
That is correct.
And where does that money come from?
That will be coming out of the general fund. We will have to incorporate that into our operating budget. This is what City Council approved. It is a 10-year payment plan.
Gotcha.
Council, Mayor Protem Wilson, if I might just add, or Ms. Fortune can add to that.
Mr. City Manager.
In that particular case, we have, we purchased property, and that's part of the 4.78 acres that I believe in the next six months. Should we be able to sell that land, pay that loan off, and have a substantial amount of additional money going to the general fund.
Okay. So, it could be a temporary liability.
Yes.
But for right now, it's set up for a 10-year pay. And then, last but not least, the city of Gran Terrace outstanding OPEB and pension liability, which is that elephant in the room, in some cases, annual OPEB and other post-employment benefits. It's a really pretty term, isn't it? But can you give us a little bit of an explanation again? Because I know we've been over this a million times, but just in case.
Which one would you like?
Other post-employment benefits. What does that consider?
That is the healthcare coverage that we actually provide to our retirees.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty. So, those are costs that were anticipated that if somebody doesn't die in the meantime, there's a fund there for that.
And they actually apply for the healthcare coverage through.
Gotcha.
If they're a city of Gran Terrace retiree.
So, that's a million and six of the bottom number, which I believe is 6,505,000. Then, we got the straight pension liabilities. And the straight pension liabilities are in two different versions because there's been legislation that have influenced those, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, in Tier 1, we are $381,000 a year that stands to increase to 440 plus or minus in the following year.
That is correct.
Which is something that we're, you know, aware of. But the total at this point is 4,845,471. How does that pay, and when does it pay off? Or does it?
It does pay off. The annual required contribution that we do pay, the 445, is credited against that 4.8 million.
Gotcha. So, that would be technically about 10-year plan, too? Plus or minus, not counting interest?
Yes, not counting interest. Please remember, interest is at 7%, 7%. CalPERS is discounted, so it's longer than 10 years, sir.
Okay. So, in that particular instance, and also the other one, the general fund for the wastewater fund, we have programs already set for those. Those are line items that are committed, that are in our budgets.
For the wastewater fund, it will be in our budget in 2021.
Okay. And then, the...
For the.
OPEB and the unfunded accrued liabilities.
Those annual, the annual required contributions are already in our line item budget.
Makes me feel better. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fortune, on packet page 167, when we looked at the $925,000 that is still owed to the, to be paid back to successor agency advances, my understanding was that the bulk of the payoff that has already been done was through a payment program, but we advanced paid so that we did not have an annual payment out for maybe 13 years?
Um.
But there's an agreement for a payback scenario.
Yes, that was a discussion. However, it was not anything that we actually formally put in writing.
I thought I remembered having that come to council.
Yeah. It came to council, and we did discuss it, yes. And I believe.
When we did the advance payment, we actually had set up a payment plan. If staff didn't follow it up with a written, written plan, then that's unfortunate, but I believe that there are records that show that council took action on that.
Okay, then I will go back and look at that and bring back a payment plan based on what was discussed then.
Right, thank you. I'll talk to you about it, you and City Manager, from what I remember, and it sounds like Councilmember Robles remembers the history of that as well.
I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Robles.
So a few things. One, when I remember when I took office in 2012, is when we were in fiscal distress, and we had that discussion of we were making a lump sum payment to the successor agency, and then we were going to have a grace period of time that we weren't going to pay. And I'm not quite sure, but I think we came back and said, no, we really need to work on that. But the other issue I have, from the housing successor agency meeting that we had, I think last week, was that I thought we owed more in the tune of $445,000. Where am I getting that number?
The $445,000 is the successor agency owing it to the Housing Authority, not to the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the general fund owes $168,000?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Now, the wastewater fund, when we're getting money, we got $400,000 from our agreement with the City of Colton, and then $300,000 annually?
Correct.
Now, we're not, they're leasing them, and they're maintaining them and all that. So this $875,000, when it's paid back, what is the encumbrances, or, well, you know, not necessarily encumbrance, but what would, what do we owe that money for? What is it sitting there for? What's?
That is sitting for any capital improvements that need to be done to the wastewater system.
Okay, so then we really need to then capitalize this and save it.
Yes, ma'am.
And then just, you know, a point for the community, and for, the PEPRA plan was a reform that Governor Brown did that was supposed to kind of reform the pension, but the reality is, it's not really saving anybody any money, as this shows that most people were already in the system at the higher rate, so we're not really getting any benefit of that for a long, long time. Oh, and then I just wanted to say, too, with the Child Care Center, I think a lot of people didn't understand here, we were, the Child Care Center was supposed to be fee-supported. It was not a needs-based program that we had a grant and that we were providing like other cities do. We were taking on water on the boat, so to speak, of liability. So we sold the building for $1 million, and after we paid all our debts to that, you know, for several years where they didn't have the money, and we were paying out of the general fund, we're going to see to the general fund $157,000? What was that number?
Yes.
Yeah.
$150,000.
So all we did was, since I came onboard 2012, and 2011 is when RDA happened, is that we've just been trying to be very careful in paying back our debts, and trying to buy property for revenue deals. But what I don't see on here, and I'm sure to look for it, we owed a huge amount of money. At one time, it was $2.3 million to another entity that was mistakenly deposited in us. Where's that liability at?
That liability is money owed to the San Bernardino Municipal Valley Water District. That was the former RDA's debt, so it is the successor agency that is paying that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Further questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Thank you for your report, Ms. Fortune. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council. This is a receive and file, so if there is no further discussion, I'd like, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll make a motion that we receive and file the January 2019 Monthly Finance Report and the FY 2018-19 Midyear and Year-end Report.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Item number 11 is to explore alternative service options for fire protection services and direct staff to pursue one or more of the following. Mr. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Once again, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. This report is, as the mayor indicated, is for fire protection services for the City of Grand Terrace. And this is an update for council on the staff's progress of alternative fire protection service options. On September 25th, staff received direction to examine other service providers for fire protection services. So staff reviewed the history of the service as provided, review and cost for delivery of service, alternative cost for delivery of service, detachment of service, and also, I want to discuss Station 23. So regarding the history, in 1965, CSA 38 was formed to provide fire protection service to the Colton unincorporated area, and actually was a number of cities. It was County Service Area 38. Zone B was Angeles Oaks. Zone D was Victorville. Zone E was Summit Valley. Zone H is Colton. Zone I is Needles. Zone J is Big River. So it's just a number of organizations where fire protection services were provided. The service was provided via CAL FIRE at the time. In 1978, Grand Terrace Incorporated, because, and because CSA 38 existed, Grand Terrace did not need to provide fire protection services at the time. The service was later, approximately 2008, reverted to San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, otherwise known as SBCFPD. And then 2018, SBCFPD annexed Grand Terrace into the FP5 Service Zone and applied $157.26 parcel tax for that application. Okay, so the question is revenue and cost for delivery of service. So the current method in which the county fire protection district provides services, they receive 10% of the 1% Avrilim property tax. So let's see what that looks like. So on your 1% property tax that everyone receives, the cost of that is broken down into different increments. So the Colton Joint Unified School Districts, so for example, if your house is worth $10, Colton Joint Unified would receive 28 cents on the dollar. Grand Terrace receives 19 cents on the dollar. The education revenue augmentation funds, education, 19 cents. The county general fund receives 12 cents, and county fire protection service receives that 10 cents that I referenced earlier. So here's an example, another example of what that looks like. So if you had a house that was worth $387,000, and that's the average house in Grand Terrace, you have a 1% Avrilim tax, you'd end up with $3,870 in terms of your tax bill. Then 10% of that would be going to county fire to provide fire protection services. So based upon the value of your house, that 10 cents of the 1% would go to the county, would be supported there. And once again, it's there at the bottom. So the county fire added FP5, added 157.26 parcel tax to every parcel in Grand Terrace. So in addition to the $387, $387, you would also have now added 157.26 parcel tax to every parcel in Grand Terrace. FP5 would generate approximately $650,000 per year, based on all the parcels in the city. And it also has the ability to do an annual increase of 3%. So the total revenue for fire protection services in Grand Terrace will be, when FP5 kicks in, about $1.6 million. County fire indicates that the cost to deliver the service is actually $2.2 million. So if the cost is $2.2 million, and after the FP5 is implemented, along with the million dollars, the county's general fund would still be subsidizing the fire protection services in the City of Grand Terrace by about $600,000 annually. So one of the tasks in which the council asked staff to look at is, they wanted staff to look at what the cost is for similar service and a similar service provider. So as the City Manager, I contacted the City Managers of Loma Linda, Riverside, San Bernardino, Colton, Calamasa, Aspiria, Victorville, Yucipa, and Fontana. And I provided them with the service that we were receiving in Grand Terrace. And that service definition was given to me by San Bernardino County Fire. And I said to each City Manager, can you please provide me with your average cost to provide this similar service? And this is what they came back with. So as I mentioned before, San Bernardino County said they provide $2.2 million of service in the City of Grand Terrace. The City of Riverside provided, their average cost was $2.3 million. City of Fontana was $2.4 million. City of Victorville was $1.5 million. City of Colton was $1.9 million. City of Loma Linda was $2.1 million. And the City of Yucipa was $1.7 million. And the City of Calamasa was $1.5 million. Calamasa and Victorville have an interesting story to tell in terms of how they arrived at their particular numbers, and they are currently providing service on the municipal level. Yucipa is actually getting service through CAL FIRE. They actually own three of their stations, and one station is funded, is owned by CAL FIRE. What these numbers show me, though, is that the $2.2 million in service that San Bernardino County Fire is providing us is very similar to the Riverside, Fontana, and City of Loma Linda number. Now, I have to caution the council in terms of the numbers, just to reiterate the fact that these numbers were given to me by the City Managers. The City Managers had their fire departments validate their numbers. But this would, before I would really take these numbers to true heart, I would have to go in and do a really in-depth analysis, make sure that they cover all the costs for the various, for the various services. So, and here's an interesting, so we have the City of Colton and Loma Linda, they actually have a shared command service. They have their own separate agencies, but they have shared command services. They have, also, they have some CalPERS unfunded accrued liability issues that we talked about earlier in the previous report. They also have positives, they have local control, they are part of a shared countywide dispatch program. They have their local labor agreements. The City of Fontana, although they are, the service is provided by county fire, they are actually the fire agency, and they collect the tax, and they contract with county fire to provide that service. They have local control, but they do have a county fire contract. The City of San Bernardino has actually moved over, and they are a part of FP5, like we recently joined. They have a shared dispatch with county fire, and they have a county fire contract. The City of Highgrove, I mean, I'm sorry, the community of High Grove has a contract with CAL FIRE. But here's how that works in Riverside County. Riverside County has the contract, and then they contract with CAL FIRE to provide the service to the, to the community. They don't have their own fire, Riverside County Fire Department. A contract with, and then they also have the contract with the county system for High Grove. Yucipa has local control. Yucipa is contracting directly with CAL FIRE. And so, an interesting story about Yucipa and Calamasa. Calamasa actually contracted with Riverside County for CAL FIRE services. Calamasa contends that if they were able to contract directly with CAL FIRE, they would have been able to stay with CAL FIRE. They indicated that because they have to work through the county, there's an administrative overhead that really sort of threw them out of the system. They were operating on a two-man engine with a volunteer service and no emergency paramedic service. And so Riverside County said to them, you must go to a three-man service, and by the way, your cost is going to go from 1.5 to 2.1 for the first year, 2.2 the next year, and 2.3 the year after that. So they had no choice, but they actually break off and go into their, into their own service, they felt. And then we have Victorville, who recently is taking back their particular service. Victorville was also trying to contract with CAL FIRE. There was, there was some discussion with CAL FIRE, and some promises made at the local level that the, the organization, the top level of CAL FIRE, didn't agree with that. So Riverside had no other choice, I mean, sorry, Victorville had no other choice but to actually do their own service. And so that's where they are right now. And so their numbers are, I, you know, that's their, they say that's a very low number of their annual cost, but I think that's going to probably dramatically increase over time. And then we have the City of Rialto. Rialto has their own fire protection services. And once again, Rialto, like Colton, and like many other municipal services, they have an unfunded accrued liability like, like the City of Grand Terrace does. So I talked about the various ways that organizations provide service. This is just the kind of a more detailed review of that. But here's something that we really have to look at when we talk about examining service. So we do know that based upon the potential revenue from the property tax and the parcel, parcel tax, is that there's going to be a generation of approximately $1.6 million in terms of revenue to provide fire protection service in Grand Terrace. Based on the view of what these other organizations are doing, we see that that level of funding is different from what the other organizations are doing. Now, there is the Victorville number, there is the Colton number, and there is Yucipa number. Colton's number is what they're saying their cost is to provide their service. So this is standalone service at the different agencies, but it does not consider that if the, if Colton were to partner with us and make some adjustments in their service, what sort of reduction that would occur, savings would occur. For example, Colton has a station off Lacadena. One of the concepts is to close that station in Lacadena, move their service into, into our fire station, and then provide that, provide that service, and then they think they would get a reduced cost. Now, those are concepts. Now, all of these concepts have to be vetted if the, if the city thought that they were going to be detaching service and moving forward. So let's, let's talk about that, the detachment of service. If council wanted to examine other partners to examine for services, we would need to go through the LAFCO process. go through the LAFCO process. So first of all, the council, we would complete the LAFCO application to detach, and then we'd have to provide a plan for service. So we'd have to find out if it was, if it was just on our own, or with another partner. We'd have to do that plan for service, and then we'd have to do a five-year fiscal analysis to show that it's going to be sustainable over a five-year, over a five-year period. So LAFCO would recommend that you, you complete the application, do the plan for service, and then do the fiscal, fiscal impact analysis, and then go to the city council and get a resolution to detach from SBCFC, from the fire district. Then the next step would be to take that information, once the council approves that, along with the service plan and the fiscal analysis, and present it to LAFCO. And then that's the resolution, the application, the plan for service, and the fiscal impact. And during, when they have that application, then the board of supervisors would do a property tax transfer hearing. Remember that 10 cents I talked about earlier that was going directly to the county? That would then become a part of the city's general fund revenue, if the city were to take over the fire protection services. And then, and then also, the FP5 would also transfer over, and that would be the primary source, and then your property tax would fill in the gap. Now, I, I must reiterate this one point. This is the cost, this is the revenue, the 1.65 million that you would be receiving from your property tax transfer over to the city. The current estimated cost for delivery of service is $2.2 million. So we're back in this process, and then, so once LAFCO determines that the application is, is okay, they have 90 days to have a LAFCO hearing. And so they'll review the application, have the LAFCO hearing, and they will make a determination of, yes, your plan, your service plan is feasible, and that it is financially feasible, and you should, you can move forward. Then after that, you would have a detached approved by LAFCO, and you have a public hearing. That's the opportunity for the, for the public to then come in and protest the hearing. And during that process, that would be the final step that you would have. Now, what I would recommend is that if the council so desired to follow that process, is that we would need to hire a consultant. So I contacted three consultants that have worked extensively in the Inland Empire, Stanley Hoffman, Terranova, and Citigate, and asked them, based upon my explanation, I gave them my staff report, I gave them the information, I said, what would the cost be to provide, provide the service? And they said, basically, look at some of the other costs. They range from $40,000 to $75,000. They can go even higher, depending on what, what you're, what you're trying to accomplish in terms of engineering maps that have to be certified, and, and your financial models, depending on the number of different agencies you, you wanted to look at. And so I said, what, for $60,000, the scope of work would be feasibility analysis for plan for service, compare cost estimates to, to revenues. And here's one of the most important things that I think is important, is very important, is to review the property tax growth versus the historical expense increases. Because we, we know that FP5 will, will provide a 3% annual increase. We also know the property taxes might increase from 3% to 6%. But what you really want to do is you want to look at the annual increase for fire protection services, looking at their labor agreements. Because if, what would happen is, you want to make sure that your revenue is increasing at the same pace or better than your expenses. And one of the concerns that, one of the things that the consultant would look at, is they would run that model for you on, on, on the various agencies that you decided to examine for your plan, for your plan of service. So the deliverables for consultants would be the LAFCO application, the five-year fiscal analysis, develop a plan for service, based on the choice that we choose, the city council resolution and submit of the LAFCO application, and property tax transfer hearing with the board of supervisors. So those would be the things that I would, that I would suggest, that a scope of work for consultant would do to, to, to work through this, through this process. I would focus on these three areas. So in the city of Colton, because they're our neighbors, we could look at examining what a partnership would look like, and come up with, with a model. And now, you know, if the model is less than the 1.65, then, okay, that's something to have a conversation about. Yucipa, because their number is a, a nice number, they contract directly with Cal Fire. So that's an option for us. One of the conversations that I tried to have with Cal Fire was the joint effort with Highgrove. But Cal, Cal Fire is broken into two different distinct groups, Riverside County and San Marino County. They kept sending me over to San Marino County, and I'm saying, well, no, I'm your neighbor in Riverside, so that requires a little more conversation and develop a relationship. And then also, Calamasa's number is a nice number, but what Calamasa is doing is, Calamasa is right now in the process of building about 3,700 homes, and they have a community finance district, and that district has an annual assessment to support fire protection services. So they're smart, they're going to grow, and the revenue's going to grow along, along with that service. And so, but those would be the three cities that I would, that I would recommend that you give me charge to look at, along with the consultant, if, if the council were to desire to move forward in, in this effort. And I, I do want to caution again. Right now, the city of Grand Terrace has no, the city incorporated, the business that we're in right now, where I am the CEO of the business, has no financial obligations for fire protection services. It does not hit your general fund, can't happen. The only way that you would have that liability is if San Marino County Fire said, we're going away, then you would have to take over that, over, over that particular, for that, for that service. So I also want to talk about Station 23. So Station 23 is actually owned by the city of Grand Terrace. And Station 23 currently houses county fire. Now, I want to go back to what I said earlier. County Fire and fire protection services is a separate agency from the city of Grand Terrace. The city of Grand Terrace actually owns that fire station, and we are a separate business altogether. The city owns the station and does major rehab on, on the station. As your city manager, I would always say, I want to monetize the assets that we have. And so if we continue in this, in the current operations, I would think that the city would have to have a discussion about Fire Station 23. It's about 0.7 acres, and the building has a square foot of 5,390. And I think that, based on my early conversations with San Marino County Fire, once the fire chief realized that the asset wasn't actually owned by county fire, they did an appraisal. Their appraisal was for $1.1 million for the building. I know that a couple of years ago, there was some discussion about just giving it to them for a dollar. Obviously, that's not an option, we can't do that. And the other thing is that San Marino County Fire is interested in a long-term relationship. Their estimate is, their appraisal's $1.1 million. If the council were so inclined to, to, to examine the sale of the property, I would recommend that we do our own appraisal, and that we, we then come forward and have a discussion with San Marino County Fire. Although there is some flexibility in, in keeping your facility and entering into a long-term lease with, if the council's not ready to pull the trigger on separate services, but that might be something you think about in the future, it becomes more palatable to do that, if you have your facility on hand versus it being transferred or sold to San Marino County Fire. So with that, mayor and council, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mayor Protan?
Mr. Duffy, just one question. As you talked about, it was a $1.1 million appraisal. As you know, I've kind of delved into this a little bit. So when was that appraisal done, and, and how was it done? Was it one of those realtor comp things that doesn't mean anything?
I, I believe what happened is that they sent out their real estate services department, and they did an estimate.
Oh, good. Okay. So we need a real appraisal?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hesse, and then councilmember Allen.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Duffy. The FP5, which is a tax imposed on the citizens, that was from the county. How could we justify getting that tax, if that was based on the county?
Well, the tax was based on fire protection services for the, for the residents in Grand Terrace. And so LAFCO would have indicated to me that that would, that would transfer over as part of the, as part of the LAFCO process.
Is that still in litigation?
Yes and no, and the city attorney could probably answer that. There was one piece of legislation that came down, but it's, the FP5 is not impacted as far as, as far as I understand, so maybe the city attorney can comment on that.
There is one case that has been brought by the Red Brennan Group for a preliminary injunction regarding the FP5 tax. That case is, that motion is still pending with the court.
Okay, so basically, what I'm asking, it's not guaranteed that we could get that FP5 money?
What was the question, Mr.?
For the additional tax money for the FP5 that the county imposed, if it's under litigation, it's not guaranteed to the city if we go with their own services?
That is, that is correct, it's not guaranteed, but what, if it, if it withstands the legal challenge, then it would transfer as, LAFCO has indicated that it would, it should transfer over as part of the, a part of the property tax, a separate item as a parcel tax.
Okay. Then on the unfunded liability, the pension fund, that's, if we were to go, let's say, with Colton, will we be inheriting their issues with their unfund liability, and we would be stuck with the bill helping them out, because we'll be pretty much stuck?
Well, what you would do is you would negotiate an agreement that would separate out that cost. That's why you'd need someone to go in and really do a financial model to see what the real costs are. But, so no, you're not going to be on the hook for it, but Colton is on the hook for it, and Colton's providing you the service. And so if Colton's operation is going to be significantly impacted, they're not going to be impacted and let your service remain whole, they're going to have to come back and renegotiate a contract with you.
Well, that was part of the thing when we were negotiating with Colton with the animal control. They wanted $250,000, where it was crazy what they offered, so I'm worried about something like that coming back and biting us for our fire protection services. The... I lost my train of thought here. So, well, we have the same resources if we went with Colton as the county fire, if we have, you know, because county's got a lot, you know, a number of resources, and Colton, I think they're limited to the resources. We had a major catastrophe here, I know county fire can take care of it.
Well, so what you deal with, you deal with things like mutual aid, and, but what happens is this, you would have to have, as part of the plan for service, LAFCO's going to look at that. LAFCO's not going, you know, people think that it's one station, and that's the cost. You're paying for a system in itself, and you're paying for that mutual aid. And so one of the things that happens in Grand Terrace is that county fire doesn't leave the Grand Terrace station uncovered. If their engine goes far away, they bring in another engine to cover the engine. So you'd have to try to work out the same sort of system with Colton. Now, remember, what I told all the city managers was, this is the type of service that we, that we receive. I'm requesting that you tell me what your cost is for that. And that's, but that has to be verified through that financial plan and that plan, plan for service. And LAFCO will definitely make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, if, if you're trying to say, because the service has to be equal to or better.
Now, I know Calamasa established their own fire department, volunteers and stuff. There's, you know, we just went over the budget right here, there's no fiscal way possible that Grand Terrace can do that, have their own, maintain their own fire department, because with the maintaining of equipment and all the other resources, I don't see how we could do that. Do you think we could have our own fire department with our budget?
Well, I would say this, that with the $1.6 million that you would receive from, from, from LAFCO, you would need to increase that rate probably over time. As a professional city manager, I would tell you that I would think, I would think it out very carefully in terms of making that decision. If that's the decision the council would like to examine and do, I think that's, that's, that's great. But as I keep reiterating, you don't have any fire liability right now. And you, you know that the service, that they, that, that if Cal Fire numbers are correct, they're saying it's $2.2 million. If you're happy with that $2.2 million service, you're currently not paying $2.2 million. If you take over the service, you will be responsible to pay for whatever that, whatever that service is.
Correct. All right, well, my last question with LAFCO. You know, reading over the council manual that you gave us, and how the city established with LAFCO, and how much they paid, and the residents that are here in Grand Terrace, wouldn't it be kind of LAFCO looking back, hey, you're, you're going after Colton to look, to take care of you, and you want to break away from Colton? I mean, this is, it seems like we're going to pay $60,000 to look at Colton and take care of us when we try to break away from them. I mean, what do you think about that?
I think that you were in that meeting when I had with LAFCO, they said to me, well, the city incorporated, because they didn't want to be a, a part of Colton. And so they're doing your sewer, and now you want them to put into, do your fire. And they, you know, but that doesn't really matter, because there are cities throughout the county, throughout, throughout the state. La Jolla is a great example. Every service that La Jolla has is provided by San Diego, but they have their own separate identity. And I think that's what Grand Terrace wanted, was their own, was their own separate identity. And so, so it's a point well taken, and it's, and it's not going to be the last time that we hear that if we move forward in the process.
All right, well, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Did the, Mr. City Manager, did the other city managers tell you what the pay scale and benefits were for their employees, those who had fire departments that they funded?
They did not. They, they sent me over the, the total number.
I see, okay. If we were to partner with Colton, would we then hire personnel to man Station 23? Or would we just say to Colton, okay, we're going to partner with you, and you just send your firefighters over to our station?
You know, you could, you could work it out the way you want, but I, my assumption would be that you would be contracting for them to provide the service, and you would have no input in terms of their hiring process. But you can work it out.
Yeah, but at the same, by, by doing it that way, like you suggested, then we would not have the long-term liabilities come with having an employee.
You, you wouldn't have the long-term liability, but you would have Colton, who has a long-term liability, and they have to recover that cost in some manner.
Right. If we detached from county, is there a guarantee, any guarantee that they will not keep any of the ad valorem, that, that, you know, that 1%, 10%, 1%? Will that all come to us then?
So after, after conversation with LAFCO, and also with some consultants, what I was told was that the, the property tax will transfer. But what they will do is, if they determine that there is an unfunded liability at the county, they will say to you, okay, you need to pay us this as part of the county, they will say to you, okay, you need to pay us this as part of the agreement. So you will, you won't get, you know, eight of the 10 cents, you'll get the whole 10 cents. And they'll give you a bill that says, this is your share for this unfunded accrued liability.
Okay. But there wouldn't be any risk to having any back pay from pre, from PAC years other than that?
No, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what would happen.
Okay, that's what it would all be for.
So going forward, there would be a regular payment that we would have to pay out of that 10%?
If that is the assessment of the county, yes.
Councilmember Allen, you still have questions?
I do. So on packet page 202, there's a list that was made up of the proposed operating budget for Fire Station 23. And going down this list, there are so many duplicate items that I became confused. I mean, there are three separate household expenses. There's one for $4,000, there's another one for $4,000, and there's, there are general maintenance, for general maintenance, and then maintenance again for $8,000, you know, general maintenance for $2,000, general maintenance for $64.39, and maintenance again for $8,000. And so there's so many duplicates on here. I know that in the grand scheme, the $2.2 million, it only amounts to a few thousand, but it's indicative to me that, and it raises a question to me, you know, of why are we paying for bedding, and why are we paying for food? And why is anyone who works for the county, why is, why are we paying $5,000 for medical expenses whenever these are county employees who obviously have good insurance? I mean, there's $5,000, you know, sure, this is a drop in the bucket compared to the $2.2 million, however, it is a substantial drop in the bucket if you add them all up, all these duplicates. So it was a question that raised in my mind was, why are there so many duplicate entries in here with separate dollar amounts totaling up to $2.2 million?
Councilmember Allen, we can certainly ask the San Bernardino County Fire at a future date to go over in detail their items. And I think that they probably have, there's probably some distinguishable difference between general maintenance and then maintenance for structure improvements. And I know what you mean in terms of the duplications, but I do want to also say that they're currently saying that the total cost for service is $2.2 million, and they're currently getting only $1 million, and they will be getting $1.6 million. But certainly, I think that they would be more than happy to sit down with us and kind of go over some of these items.
So, and is, there are, we are not the first city to struggle with this issue. I mean, San Bernardino did several years ago when they went through bankruptcy, Cala Mesa, we've talked about them. Are there any lessons learned that we can, from them, that we can take in and so that we don't have to, you know, make the same mistakes they might have made or any advice they can offer us?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things I showed the consultants earlier, and those consultants have worked extensively with the numbers of cities, and, but our situation is a little unique. It's much different than San Bernardino, Victorville, because in this particular case, we're looking at detaching from a service that we already know our tax base isn't big enough to support. So what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be taking on the responsibility to raise the rate enough to cover it. Or, or, I mean, even when you turn around, and let's say Colton is a viable option, and it makes perfect sense that you partner with your neighbor to move forward. I really need to vet those numbers to make sure that you're making, that you're making the right decision. And so as it stands right now, the 1.650, if we get all of that with no liability, that might be possible. But when you look at the escalation, you're going to be the ones to have to do a 3% annual increase. You're going to be the ones to have people come down every year about the 3% annual increase. You're going to be the one to have to find additional revenue and liability. So that's a change from this other process.
Councilmember Robles?
Well, I hear what you're saying as far as we become responsible for fire protection services and finding the revenues for it, but the thing that struck me sitting here was, the city of Victorville for a three-man crew is $600,000 less than what it costs the county to do. The city of Colton, it's $300,000 less. Yacaipa, was it $435,000 less? And city of Cala Mesa, which I don't think we can really compare ourselves to, but it's $700,000 less. So what has happened essentially, when most cities incorporate, you have a look at what CSAs you have. And Cal Fire at that time was cheaper because the fire, the state was responsible for the watershed, and they had state responsibility areas. And while they were here anyways, they said to them, packing up and leaving, we would pay for them for the months that they weren't obligated for the state responsibility area. So I don't understand historically why the city didn't take responsibility for that. So essentially, what we have, in my view, is a choice about, do we want the county board of supervisors to make labor agreements that impact us that seem to be quite expensive when you look at what it costs other three-man crews in other cities? The one issue that didn't come up for me was, what if there is a split role on the ballot and it passes? Then there's even more money available, because they're going to, the Prop 13 will now tax commercial buildings. So there's going to be, so, you know, all the tax rate areas will grow. So it's kind of a dilemma, because when I was doing my homework on this, I thought, well, we really don't have a lot of money to study things, but then at the same time, it's, they're telling us that it costs more to do. So I'm really looking for what my peers want to do, is something that I think we could look at during the budget for two things, a trigger of when we sell that property and we have the 800 and something coming back to our general fund, and we're in a different place to discuss these things. And also some analysis on if there's a split role, and maybe getting some, I mean, some of this stuff we can do ourselves. I mean, when you're saying vetting the numbers, the numbers are salaries and benefits. And what they have in there, they have, in their costs, they have several administrative costs in there that are going to be way to, that are possibly not possible for others to fund their administrative, where did I see that? And then why did we build a fire station for fire services that we don't have? And I'm thinking back, living here, we use redevelopment agency money, so we had free money, and we threw it around. You know, so we didn't want the responsibility, yet we paid, you know, for a new fire station. So I guess what I'm looking at is kind of some direction from my peers. I mean, there is some savings that might be worthwhile looking for. I'm just not sure we have the money right now in the budget, so, you know, it's a matter of what my peers' direction I'm amenable to, to about.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Wilson?
Personally, I think we should, I think this is not a timely issue, or not a timely discussion. I think we should, we've got a lot of balls in the air and a lot of things that are going to change in this city shortly. I think at this point, we don't dedicate $60,000 to a fishing expedition. As the city manager has so pointedly pointed out, we're getting $600,000 worth of free service that we would have to replace. And at this point, that doesn't make sense, money-wise. So I'm not in favor of exploring alternative service options for fire protection services or to direct pursue, staff to pursue one or more of the following.
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Allen, you had a question?
No, I like what, I mean, I do.
Shall I go out for public comment then, before we have this discussion?
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, I will open up public comment. Thank you. Jeffrey McConnell?
Jeffrey McConnell, Walden Avenue. Was an interesting topic, right after Finance Director showed us how much money we owe because of bad decisions in the past and not being very fiscally sound in some of those decisions from previous councils. So I'm saying we need to start thinking from here on out, more out of the box, more creative. As our newly-appointed supervisor just pointed out with her 511 program, that they were partnering with two other counties to possibly save money. Instead of spending $60,000 on a consultant, why don't we just go talk to Colton and include a couple of council members? You guys work a whole lot cheaper than consultants do. And if Colton is suggesting as the possibly shutting down their Lacadaña Station, moving up here, that Lacadaña Station covers a portion of Colton. That cost would not come completely up to Colton and my, Grand Terrace in my mind, because it still shares part of Colton. So we should split the cost with their southwest quadrant of Colton that it covers. It should share the cost. So as, and of course, it shares administrative costs too with Loma Linda, and it's locally controlled by locals. And that old problem with Colton rivalry in Grand Terrace, that's 40 years ago. Most of that's gone, most of those people are gone. So, and there's other ideas. I've looked at all the stats over the years, because I come to most of the council meetings, that like out of 100 calls, like over 90% of them are medical. A lot of them go to the Brookdale. I see the fire truck in there all the time, using the jaws of life to pry those elderly people out of their bed. So why don't we let AMA, I've also been in an emergency in Loma Linda, and AMA has got gurneys lined up down the hall. So why don't we let AMA take care of the medical pickups and just subcontract or do on-call even with Colton and High Grove stations? Colton Station is four football fields from our border. Last year, just north of the farm, we've had four fires in the riverbed within four months, and every time it's Colton who showed up first. So, and High Grove is about a couple of blocks to the south of us. So both stations are, if you use both stations within a mile, they cover most all of Grand Terrace within a mile. So I think other ideas, can we even do that on-call? That's another question that needs to be asked. So I need to think, we need to think out of the box, postpone this idea and do some more research. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. All right, that was the only request to speak I have, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion. And Mayor Protem, you were suggesting that you did not favor authorizing an appropriation and having further discussion on this item at this time? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to that extent as well.
Okay. Councilmember Allen, you had comments?
I did. I wanted to ask how they, how it's working out. And in your footnotes here on delivery of fire protection service, you talk about Colton and Loma Linda having shared command services to reduce cost, and it also reduced their ISO rating, saving their residents. Insurance rates went down for their fire protection. But is there any disadvantage? What's going on with that?
Well, in that particular case, with those two organizations, they just have the shared command service. And what happened is, they were then able to develop an effective training program. So they had their people trained properly, and they were able to have a better emergency response service. And so in doing so, they met all of their standards, and the result of that is that the community would benefit through reduced ISO ratings.
Okay. And the only other observation that I've got about our fire department that I want to end with my comments. When I moved here, we had paid-on calls and we had volunteers. And do we still have those? Do we still have any volunteers who are paid-on calls?
Mr. Duffy?
You haven't fully manned.
No, no, I know, I know we do, but is there an opportunity for a resident to be a volunteer firefighter in Grand Terrace?
I would have to ask, there is not.
That used to be like a rite of passage for young men in Grand Terrace growing up. You know, it's like Boy Scouts, and then, you know, you can become a volunteer firefighter and, you know, whoa, whoa. Why can't we have that anymore for our, we need more for our youth?
Okay. I think that's a different discussion at this time.
Oh, okay.
I think it is. I think that separates from the discussion that we're having, which is what direction we're giving staff at this time. And so I have not made my comments, and I will say a few things. One is, I believe this exercise started out of the $157.26 levy that was placed on our residents on their property tax. And from that, I heard council members saying, well, we need to detach then. We shouldn't, we shouldn't put our residents through the price that they're going to have to pay additionally on their property tax. But the reality is, except for the legislation, or, excuse me, the litigation that is underway, that $157.26 is going to stay on our residents' property tax. So we started with the idea that we were out to do something better for our residents and something that would cost them less money. And in reality, we can't say that that's what we're doing. We may get a better deal, but we are also looking at increased liability to the city, which again is increased liability to our taxpayers. And as far as the consultants, I keep hearing people say, well, you know, we can have staff, or we can have council members go and talk to these entities and come up with the costs associated. And that's true, but I think that was only part of the equation. There is, there are many other reports that would be required in the application process to LAFCO, and I think that those are best done by a professional organization that does those types of engineering reports and does the analysis and the modeling. I think that at this time, we have stretched our staff members beyond what we've hired them to do, and I would really like Mr. Duffy to get back to focusing on economic development instead of creating a model that may or may not withstand the test that we needed to withstand. And so I would tend to second the motion that Mayor Protem Wilson made. And Councilmember Hesse, you had a comment?
I agree with Mr. Wilson, I agree with your second. My thing is, you know, it was brought up about building the fire station. You know, we built a daycare, and we've seen where that took us. We, it took us down the wrong path. We couldn't sustain that. We built a fire station, and I don't think we could sustain that. I think the county, I think the county's doing a great job at that, so I just wanted to make that comment that we build these buildings, but we didn't, back then, we didn't have a big plan for these buildings. We thought it was going to be unicorns and rainbows, and it didn't work out. So I, that's all my last comment.
I believe we wanted a local fire station so that we have fire protection services as close as we could have them. As far as the disposition of the fire station, is that something that council would want to, is that part of your motion, Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, and I'm glad you reminded me. The other part of that motion would be to explore, for staff to explore. The other part of that motion would be to explore, for staff to explore, a real appraisal and our opportunity to be able to recoup the cost of that station based on the idea that it's being used. And it's an unusual situation compared to other jurisdictions.
Can we explore, I'm sorry, Mayor, can we explore the appraisal plus the rent appraisal for that?
Yes.
On both those?
Okay. So I'll make that part of my second. And Councilmember Robles, you had more comments?
I'm wondering, since the county's subsidizing us already and they had to go and do a parcel tax, where are they going to come up with a million dollars or whatever to pay us? That's a question. So what I'd like to do is, yes, I don't think this is timely, but I think maybe what we should do is at least wait until we see what's on the ballot as far as a split role and see what money comes back to us that's owed to the general fund, and come back maybe in this time next year and revisit this.
Are you asking to revisit it in entirety? Or the disposition of the station?
I'm thinking, I mean, part of me just feels like this ship has sailed, it's better just to move along. But the other thing is when I'm seeing pretty huge differences in what it costs to support a three-station crew, I kind of feel like we should maybe look at that if we can. I just don't think it's now.
All right. So I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, can you ask, either repeat the motion or ask?
Absolutely.
Because was the appraisal for sale or for rental purposes?
I believe there was appraisal for sale, and then there was the discussion of the rental and looking at both of those options. Is that true? Okay. So motion by Mayor Protem, second by Mayor. Any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Motion passes. Councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNaboe votes yes, Councilmember Robles abstains.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to requests for future agenda items by the city council. And we set forth a policy in our 2030 vision, 2014-2020 strategic plan that if council members interested in a task or project that will require more than one hour of staff time to complete, the item will be agendized to ask city council if time should be spent on preparing a report. Pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act, no other items will be considered other than those listed below. We have one item tonight. That is the review of the current budget to identify funding for overtime to secure extra share of patrol in the city of Grand Terrace. That was requested by Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know we had a budget meeting tonight, but I would like to see if any cuts can be made on certain areas and if we could, at least had to have a, see what the overtime would cost for extra patrol, you know. Anything, I'm always worried about our officers, I'm worried about our public here, and especially since we just had another unfortunate murder in our city. It could have went a lot worse. It did go worse, but I just wanted to look into all avenues, see if the city can subsidize overtime between now and the end of this year.
All right. Interest in that. I would like to see us wait until we review the budget in May and look at the oncoming budget for that item. But if there's a, that would be a motion by Councilmember Hesse. Is there a second? All right.
Mayor, if that's fine, if we could, I'm willing to bring this back at the end of May if we could do that.
Well, I would make an alternate motion that we have staff review, when they do the budget review for the upcoming budget, that they look to see if there's an opportunity to provide any type of overtime funding. That would be my motion.
I agree with that, I second that.
All right. So please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Okay, thank you. We do have a closed session tonight. We have one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. And if you are not with us when we come back, just please keep in your mind, we will be closing in memory of three of our...
Madam Mayor?
City Manager.
Oh, I see. You know, city manager. Really? Do you want, you're going to give us something that we have to consider during your employee evaluation, aren't you?
Yeah, and it's all good news.
All right, all right, Mr. City Manager. What say you?
So this past weekend, the Friends of the Library had a book sale, and they were extremely excited about the results. They had a number of people there, and they made over $500.
Excellent.
And so they're very happy, and they're very thankful for the partnership with the city, placing the signs in the kiosks and the boards throughout the city.
I will say that I heard from three different Friends of the Library members how pleased they were with that.
Right. Next, we have a workshop happening on April the 11th for the Blue Mountain Trailhead. And so this is the postcard that we're sending out to property owners in a thousand feet from the property. And this is really sort of a really exciting event that's going to be happening on April the 13th. It's the Pick Up, Paint, and Plant Volunteer Event throughout the city of Grand Terrace. You can sign up to volunteer to paint some of the retaining walls throughout the city on Barton Road, Mount Vernon, and Main Street. You can pick up trash throughout the city. You can plant, help plant trees in some of the empty tree wells on Mount Vernon and Main Street. And you can also help us plant, replant plants in the fitness park. And then at the end of the event, there will be lunch and a release of 15,000 ladybugs during the event. So it should be an exciting event. We're hoping that everyone comes out and participates in that program. But that finishes my comments, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. My apologies for not giving you your time. So before we adjourn, or before we recess to close session, I will just remind people we will be closing tonight in memory of Ryan Harsony, Willie English, and Albert Madrid, and that the next regular city council meeting will be held on April 9, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing, submitted to the city clerk's office, and requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. And at this time, we will be recessing to closed session. As I mentioned before, one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. At this time, we are in recess. All right, we'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session. For what item? Public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. We have no items to report, and so we will adjourn our meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, April 9, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. We are doing so in memory of three Grand Terrace residents who have passed. Ryan Harsony, business owner, and Willie English, Grand Terrace resident and Marine veteran, and Albert Madrid resident. Any requests to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. I will thank all of those who were here tonight, and I will thank my council members for their discussion and participation. We are adjourned.